Test. Test, 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 test. Test, test. Is this loud enough? Test. Test. Test, test. Test. Test.
Test, test. One, two, three. Test.
Take your time because I was just went down so long.
Thank you. Take your time because I was just went down so long.
Test, test. One, two, three. Test.
You're good. Good evening, everyone. In accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22, I hereby call the October 8, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Bexley Board of Education to order. Kyle, would you call the roll for us?
Dr. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Ms. Pickrell?
Here.
Ms. Powers?
Here. Thank you. As we work to ensure that our Public Participation section is responsive to the needs of our community as well as the board's interest in conducting business in an orderly and efficient manner, we ask that those wishing to speak at public comment sign up at the podium before the beginning of our meeting. Is there anyone here who would like to speak at public comment who has not signed up at the podium? Great. Kyle, would you grab that for us? Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The minutes of our September meeting have previously been provided to the board. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Agenda. Sorry. Likewise for the agenda, may I have a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also carries. I'll turn it over to Dr. Fine.
Thank you so much. The point of the meeting, we love. We're going to ask our National Merit Scholarship semifinalists to step to the podium, please. Let's give it up for our five semifinalists. Yeah. A huge congratulations to our Bexley High School seniors Reese Goldman, Wilson Klingelhofer, Harrison McCutcheon, George Ramsden, and Radley Smith. All were recently named National Merit semifinalists by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Recently, officials of the National Merit Scholarship Corporation announced these five students along with the names of more than 16,000 semifinalists in the 71st Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the competition for some 6,800 National Merit Scholarships worth nearly $26 million that will be offered next spring. In order to be considered for a Merit Scholarship Award, semifinalists who you see in front of you now must fulfill several requirements to advance to the finalist level of the competition. And National Merit finalists for the class of 2026 will be announced in February. This is no small feat. We are super proud of you. Congratulations. If you would, students, you'll step to the podium. You will introduce yourself, who you brought with you, and tell us your plans or goals for next year.
I'm George Ramsden. I brought my mom, Anna Ramsden, and my dad, Jonathan Ramsden. And my plans for next year are to go to college, though I'm not sure where yet. So, thank you.
I'm Radley Smith. I brought my parents, Sarah Smith and Kerouac Smith. And my plans for next year are to obtain research and take the opportunities available to me to further my education.
My name is Reese Goldman. I brought the whole family. So my mom, Barbara Goldman, my dad, Todd Goldman, my great aunt, Ruthie. I'm blanking on the last name right now. My grandpa, Ted Fisher, and my grandma, Barbara Goldman. And then my plans for next year are to attend college and major in Foreign Affairs and International Relations.
My name's Wilson Klingelhofer. I have my parents, Peter and Suzanne Klingelhofer, here with me. And next year, I would like to go to college for Electrical Engineering.
My name is Harrison McCutcheon, and I brought my mother, Kimberly Kaiser, with me today. And my plans for next year are to go to college and hopefully do a double major in math and physics.
That's awesome. Well, on behalf of the Board of Education, we're super proud of you. A huge congratulations. And we're going to get you back out of those seats. We're going to take a photo with the Board of Education. Let's give it up one more time.
I hadn't seen a couple of those boys in... Hey, Jason? I hadn't seen a couple of the boys since COVID, and they just got super tall and...
Skyrocketed.
So the next item on our agenda is public participation. The board welcomes the opportunity to hear from our community members. We encourage your participation within certain parameters. Public participation is an opportunity to be heard, but it is not a Q&amp;A session with the board. I will be responsible for the orderly conduct of the meeting and the appropriateness of the subject being presented. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address. Our public participation policy allot five minutes to each person wishing to speak until the time of 30 minutes is used. If we have more speakers than would be, take up 30 minutes, then the board can consider extending the time at that moment. So, Kyle, I'll turn it over to you.
Alicia Mitchell.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Fine, and Mr. Smith. I want to take a moment to both thank you and to place certain facts on record regarding recent events so that the truth is clear and forward progress can continue. First, our family is deeply grateful for the steps that this district and board have taken to right course. I know you don't often get that. Thank you. The development of our formal plan to protect our son supports in place, complete with identified trusted adults, communication protocols, and expectations for staff, represent a significant commitment to his well-being and signals the seriousness of the concerns that arose. The restructuring of leadership within the basketball program and the broader administrative changes further demonstrate the district's recognition that systemic correction and culture change was necessary. However, you must frame it how you must, and I understand that. And you have stoically accepted my ire, and I appreciate that. It is important to address that recent public statements as late as last month that attempted to minimize or misstate the outcome of our independent investigation, we wish as a family to correct that. We never filed a complaint of racism against the coach, athletic director, or director of operations. We filed under a narrow scope of your policy, a complaint against discrimination of our son's disability. And while the investigator did not discredit our claims, under the rule of law, and that policy could not be substantiated, but not because it didn't just happen to our son, it happened to multiple students. So discrimination could not be substantiated under that definition. What was credited and substantiated, and what I have spoken about for the last four months, is that several acts, and I quote, "of retaliation against my son," including improper staff communications, exclusion from team activities, and awards... exclusion from team activities, and awards, was in fact substantiated, patterns of behavior substantiated, and found credible. And that distinction matters. The corrective actions taken by the district, including staff removals, fancy-worded resignations, and creations of safety plans and so forth, reinforce that reality and that truth. But I want to recognize those who have demonstrated leadership throughout this process. Principal Cottle has handled an extraordinarily complex situation with professionalism, ensuring staff understood the seriousness of the plans and their obligations under it. Likewise, Coach Leland has approached my son's reintegration with care and sensitivity, centering the student's needs, and considering the impact of every communication and action sense, and you need to know that. These examples of leadership deserve recognition. As the district moves forward, I encourage you to build on the progress that you have made. The recent reviews of special education services provide a model for continued improvement, although I'm sure there will be people who disagree. It's a step in the right direction. My hope is that you will include athletics and extracurricular programs as part of that lens. Our students need mental health support tailored to the unique pressures of athletics and their disabilities. Trauma-informed training for coaches and anyone associated with those programs, an expansion of restorative justice practices that examine what and how they will be implemented to help rebuild trust and repair harm. These aren't just optional extras, they're foundational to safe and inclusive, thriving school environments. The changes made over the last year were not easy, nor my son as a victim of abuse was even harder to live through, but they were necessary, and us speaking out against it was absolutely imperative. On behalf of my family, I thank the board and the district for taking all of those claims and taking action, and I urge you to keep moving forward with courage. Students like my son, Aiden, and many others not only benefited from your leadership, but they will continue to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bridgette Call.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Bridgette Call. Address is 872 Vernon Road in South Bexley. I'm speaking a little bit more casually. I'm here as a parent. My son is in kindergarten. I've been an attorney for 15 years, and as you are well aware, and I believe there are a number of parents and grandparents here based on a similar circumstance about the threats that have been made against the school. I won't go into the detail about the specific threat, but I do think in a time where there's still considerable violence occurring in schools, there's political violence, there's religious violence, as a parent, I would ask that the board consider a school resource officer program again. I understand that they have been scaled back significantly, especially since 2020. There's some research from pre-2020 that called into question the role of school resource officers, how effective they are, whether or not they cause a school-to-prison pipeline, whether or not they cause a lot of concerns about disparate impact on disabled children, children that are minorities, that kind of thing. However, if you do the research and you look at modern school resource officer programs, they have come a significant way. They are trauma-informed. The officers are typically picked in conjunction with the schools. They're not just, you know, the most senior guy that comes in and sits around and plays on his phone. They're people that are inspired, that are trained specifically based on nationally recognized standards. And I think Bexley is a community that can achieve that. We have an excellent police department. I know it would take a long process in order to get the staffing and to get the officers in the school, but I do think reconsidering this programming would benefit our children and benefit our community. Some of the national resources that I've found helpful in looking into this issue, I would note that, and I apologize, the National Association of Secondary School Principals, they have an article that discusses the pros and cons of school resource officer programming, and they specifically cite NASRO, which is the National Association of School Resource Officers. And they go through specific memorandums of understanding, protocols that establish the role of the officer in the school. They're there to support the children, not to penalize the children. If you look at the Secret Service, they've done a significant amount of research, the BTAM, the Behavioral Threat Assessment Management research that they've done. They talk about the role of resource officers inside of the schools in supporting the children, developing a relationship with the children, being able to identify threats before they become a threat, being able to be a person that the kids can talk to to report a threat. Another thing that I've seen firsthand is the ability to help children, not just from an outside threat, but help them when they are experiencing trauma themselves. The Gehanna Police Department and Gehanna Schools, they've recently implemented a program, and I want to get the correct name of it here, the Handle With Care Program, that helps law enforcement assist teachers in notifying them when a child has experienced trauma, whether or not they're a victim of a crime, a fire, a death in the home, that kind of thing. This programming is about helping the children in addition to preventing an exterior threat, and I think we have a very professional police department. We have a motivated school system that is wanting to communicate and create a program that is best for the children. It will make the kids feel safe, will make the community feel safe. And I would just ask that this program be considered, that it be discussed with the police department, and the steps that would look into what would be best for our community are taken. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Elise Kirmish.
Good evening. Elise Kirmish, 50, South Parkview Avenue. I am also here this evening to speak about the threats to the school, but I actually share an opposing perspective. I am not in favor of placing a community resource officer in our schools. I do not think that there is a adequate benefit to placing an officer in our schools. I want to thank our staff, our superintendent, our school administrators, our staff, for working so effectively and efficiently together. I think that our schools are most effective when our staff and our community are able to lean in together and to have a wonderful, formed relationship. I would love to see us improve that even more. I would like to see even more volunteering and opportunities for our families to come back into the schools. When we have the opportunity to bring people into our school community, we understand each other better. And when we understand each other better, we know where our strengths and our weaknesses are, and that's where we learn where our families need support, and that's where we learn how to fill our gaps, and where we can fill those gaps with the supports that we need, and that's how we protect ourselves. One person in a building is a false narrative, and I'm not in support of spending our tax dollars on a false narrative that sends my children to school pretending that one person is going to protect them. It's just not possible. I know that you know that. We know that. And it is a travesty that there are bad people in the world who make bad decisions, and I don't want bad decisions to happen any more than anyone else does. But I also know that putting an officer in a school is not going to actually solve the problem. Leaning into our community and getting to know each other and finding relationships and building supports for each other, that's what's going to support our communities and solve our problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jake Edelstein.
Good evening. My name's Jake Edelstein. I live at 254 South Merkel Road. I have three little boys, seven, five, and two and a half. Do you guys know where your cell phone is right now? It's rhetorical. Imagine if it was in your car, and you forgot to lock your car. That's what it's like sending our kids to school every day. We send our phone in, there's no locks. Well, there's locks, but the locks only do so much, and she's right. One is not enough, but you guys aren't even willing to do one. One's just to minimize the event that would potentially happen and potentially stop it earlier, because mental health is the real problem everywhere. So, we're not going to solve mental health overnight, and by choosing to ignore bad people and bad things that happen, well, why do we have locks? Why do we have police in the first place? Because we know that these are real risks that happen at a rate. The rate of the risk that we are all concerned about is happening more and more and more. We should have more than one school resource officer. We should have one at every part of the campus, each elementary school. It's absolutely a joke that we can be in Bexley and think that we're too good to have a school resource officer. What message does it send? Who feels disenfranchised by having support and someone there that could potentially help you in a way that teachers are not going to be able to do, administrators aren't going to be able to do, social workers and therapists aren't going to be able to do? There's only a certain amount of people with certain credentials that can do what we need to be done to protect our children, to lock our car from blocks away, when people can walk around the school and see right in, or line up with golf balls and hit three woods into a field, which happened to me. And you find that the administration does nothing about it in trying to find out, except for Mr. Harley Williams actually follows up on it and does some digging, and lo and behold, we do have security footage that previously was not willing to be looked at to find who these boys were that decided to line up real golf balls at the Cassingham Field and fire them off into a crowd of kids. Now, that was a really easy thing for a 13-year-old kid to do with golf balls, right? They knew what they were doing. There was huge risk there. We were all stuck, standing in a field naked, essentially. I don't want that for my kids. Nobody should be fearful that when they send their kid to school, that there's not the security, the protectiveness, and the mindset to keep them safe from things that may or may not happen. But to pretend that we're not going to even be prepared is just unacceptable. We need to increase school counseling for all kids.
I agree with you.
Athletes, musicians, arts, every single person, all of our staff, mental health care should go up in addition to physical security.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lee Nathans.
Good evening. I'm Lee Nathans at 55 South Remington Road. I'm here tonight to express my gratitude to each and every one of you and to Dr. Fine and Dr. Williams for your participation in Project Adam and helping make our schools, our students, and our community safer by having been trained in CPR and AED awareness. I know that we have just celebrated our second anniversary of HeartSafe Bexley. Many of you have participated in our CPR, AED training. The schools are now each certified as Project Adam Certification from Nationwide Children's Hospital, and it's been a valuable community resource. I'd like for you to consider, and I'm willing to work with you on this, to expand HeartSafe Bexley into each of the school's playgrounds area, to provide for the location of AEDs in cooperation with the city, to show that lifesaving equipment will be available in each section of Bexley, for public access safe stations, as we have on Main Street in front of the library, as well as at the parks, Schneider Park, Commonwealth Park, and the pickleball courts. Expanding AED, public access AEDs, in a cooperative manner with the city of Bexley is something that I'm willing to work with you on and provide the details to get this accomplished. Also, in terms of the security, school resource officers, I am the past president of the Bexley Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. We had looked into this and invited school resource officers from many departments with a meeting with the school boards. This was prior to COVID. If there is a role that we can play to help bridge that gap between the community and to the school board in terms of providing a practical, workable solution for providing the added level of security for the parents of the community and having it work out financially and equitably for the school board, I'm certainly volunteering to assist in that area, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry if I can't read. Is it Taisha Lett...
Yeah, it's a hard name.
No, I couldn't tell. Is it an I?
It's an I, yes. It's Tiacha Lettystack. I live at 256 North Cassingham Road, and I'm a Bexley resident and a parent of a high schooler. Before I start my statement, I just wanted to correct some misinformation that was recently stated earlier. Utilizing biased resources created by organizations that support school resource officers or police officers is not necessarily a valid research source. So, the report by NASRO is not a legitimate research organization or a comprehensive report with unbiased data. Neither is one written by the Secret Service. They would undoubtedly advocate for more of their own presence in public spaces. I would encourage you to look at legitimate research and information from policy experts that are unbiased, that are actually valid. And furthermore, one of the other statements made is actually inaccurate. There is no data to suggest that having an armed officer decreases the amount of violence on school campuses. In fact, the correlation between armed officers on the scene, that is the number-one factor associated with increased casualties during school shootings. There is a well-documented public health effect called the weapons effect, that when weapons are present in a place, it almost emboldens individuals to bring and utilize more weapons and to arm themselves more during a school shooting that is planned. So, the presence of a weapon increases aggression and violence. Whenever firearms are present, that does not necessarily mean individuals are safer. It means there is more room for error and more room for casualties, and the data over four decades of research, including after the pandemic, all corroborate and confirm that. And I've sent in like a written statement with all of these references from journals like JAMA, from policy and management journals related to public safety, and academic journals. Armed officers are incentives, not deterrents. That is what the peer-reviewed literature has shown, and the majority of shooters who target schools are students at that school who are well aware of the safety protocols in place and the drills that have been done. Schools must invest in resources to prevent these incidents before they occur. The presence of an SRO does not decrease the prevalence. One of the number-one state and national findings in a report have found also that police in schools are held even less accountable for abuses against students than police in the general public because of contentious legal standards. They have qualified immunity... They have qualified immunity and a duty to maintain order and discipline in the schools. That preschool-to-prison pipeline definitely still exists. It did not go away after the pandemic. In fact, much of the research that has been published since then shows that the pandemic exacerbated these disparities in treatment of students with disabilities and students who come from disenfranchised backgrounds. Although many hypothesize that increased law enforcement will protect their children from mass school shootings, countless studies have shown that police officers instead arrest and brutalize children over minor disciplinary issues, particularly African-American children and students with disabilities who are three times more likely to be choked, to be slammed to the ground, or to be assaulted for minor misbehaviors. A 2023 study led by faculty at the University of Albany, published in the Journal of Policy Analysis and Management, also shows that having police in schools results in harsher disciplinary action. And there is data that has been compiled across the board over four decades showing that mass shootings have not been prevented or stopped despite the proliferation of SROs. So that means more and more schools are getting SROs, but the likelihood of a school shooting is not decreasing as a result of that. And so I would urge you to think about the welfare of our children and the fact that what people might assume is not the reality, and those are not the actual facts. Some states have arrest rates with as much as eight times the rate of schools that don't have SROs. So if you have an SRO, your students are seeing harsher punishments occurring. In short, I would say that it is not necessarily safer to have SROs, and I hope you consider the facts over the fear.
Thank you. That's all. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate the input for the board. So the next item on our agenda is board updates. Joanne, I'll go to you.
Okay. So the Bexley Rec Board is meeting this evening, so I don't have a report because I'm here. But I will look at the minutes and report back at the next meeting. For Policy Committee, we have two new policies up for first read. J E F B, which is related to religious release time. We edited the policy at the suggestion of the OSBA and new information provided from the state for the requirement to authorize a student to be excused from school to attend a release time course for at least one period per week. That one period cannot exceed two periods total in a week for elementary or middle and the amount of time equivalent to attending two units of high school credits per week for high school students. It was also edited to reflect new guidance on students bringing back, I will use this in air quotes, trinkets into the schools to reference the student handbooks and policies for guidelines for these materials to be brought back to school. It does not prohibit the distribution of these materials by the program. BK was also edited based on the OSBA's recommendation. The main edits really deal with when the board can have just, I would say, one read of a policy for minor edits. Sometimes we edit for changes in a person's job title or someone to report or something that the superintendent wants to provide another staffer to be in charge of. So those are the new policies. We don't have any edits on the second reads of the other policies on tonight. And we did receive a new set of policies. There are over 35 of them to review based on new rules and regulations that we need to get through. And we will start doing that at our next policy meeting next week. Also, is this on here? Sorry. Well, I'm just going to, Patrick will probably also add to this. The Facilities and Finance Committees, again, they're jointly meeting. We had two meetings since our last board meeting. This group is really coming together to do really one thing. They're, excuse me, a couple of things. They're here to really recommend to the board, to the administration, and to staff what they consider the first phase of our facilities plan. No decisions have been made yet, but they're thinking about big-picture projects that may be included in the first phase. Possible funding scenarios, whether that's Mills or income tax or a combination. When we may go on the ballot for said improvements. And then they're also looking at the total cost of projects. So those recommendations will be coming from that committee. I think we have probably one or two committee meetings left. We'll have to check on that, but we'll report back. And then Patrick also attended, so he might have some additional details on that.
Any questions for Joanne?
Nope.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Yep, thank you very much. Just really quickly, thank you very much, Brad, for your leadership with the Technology Committee and for Mike obviously being a part of it. So the one-to-one rollout, students getting the devices is done. Thank you, Brad, for organizing that and leading it. Me, as an educator, I know it's tough sometimes to have plans for someone to cover into your class. So whatever you can do to help make the transition smoother. So in this case, making sure that the technology works for our subs is very important. It's very reassuring for the subs who are taken over. And of course, for the faculty who are entrusting their care to our professionals. Thank you very much for your work with the Technology Integration Group and the Tech Hub. Brad is very passionate about digital wellness, and he's a leader. And he's always recruiting more schools for that, right? How many schools do you have now, Brad? Eleven? Thirteen. It went up just that fast, right? So 13 schools are part of that group. And again, he's working on digital wellness in terms of screen time has always been an issue, right? And so now he's working things out so that guardians have the ability to shut down Chromebook usage after school in a very organized way. We get the cellphone policy rolled out. And of course, we got a chance to do a little field trip over to one of the faculty members' classrooms and see the sound and the screen and so forth. So great work there with the model classroom. Other things have been going on, of course. I attended the Diverse Learning PTO Meeting a few weeks ago. Plenty of things to do around Bexley, as you all know. And of course, we all, the three of us, attended the Canada Nights Forum. There should be another slide. There we go. Speaking of One Bexley, we've, Zach Parrish from the library is kind of taking care of the minutes. And Ben Heckman is leading that, more or less, with Ben Kessler as well. One of the students from the summer internship program created a community resource guide. They're going to go ahead and add to it and make it more of a digital format. There's other things that are going on. Be prepared for our One Bexley Yard Sign Campaign. Spoiler alert, spoiler alert for that. We did have a little bit of a disappointment with some rain that just came. We had no rain for like three or four weeks. And all of a sudden, bam, the rain came right when we were trying great for the event. But have no fear, October 12th is here. So this coming Sunday, there'll be another opportunity. I heard it's going to be all sunshine and not too hot. So we had that then. COSBMA met in September, and we had Representative Lett join our group. And that's my report.
Any questions for Jonathan? Mike?
All right. The Athletic Board has not met, and they're scheduled to meet on the 15th of October. And I'll report after that. The PTO and Boosters, I had a conflict scheduling, but Dr. Baker was there for the PTO meeting. Boosters have not met, as far as I know. And the Technology Committee, well, the only thing I will add to what Dr. Baker just said was that the parent portal, Lightspeed, is what he was making reference to. That would allow you to control your students' access to the internet during the day or after hours, that is, after school hours and also on weekends. And that Champion Chats, a digital awareness wellness forum hosted by Dr. Lewis, is going to take place November 19th between 6:00 and 7:00 p.m. at the high school library. Aside from that, I think Dr. Baker did a fantastic job, so I'm going to conclude there.
Questions for Mike? Patrick?
Yes, not much to add to Joanne's comments about the Combined Facility Advisory Council and Finance Committee and Finance Advisory Council. But I will say I have been impressed with the engagement and commitment of the people in those groups to go through this process that I think we have a meeting on the 14th, a meeting on the 28th, and then we will conclude and be wrapping up. So a lot of work has been done. We've got to get to the deliverables that Joanne mentioned and look forward to the next couple of meetings accomplishing that.
Any questions? Thank you. Lily House has a conflict tonight. I think she's playing with the orchestra, so we're sorry that she can't join us, but grateful for her to, for letting us know. I'm going to start my report with gratitude for an amazing assembly that took place this afternoon for our high school juniors and seniors. Guest speaker Alex Kershaw, who's a journalist and the author of a number of bestselling books, including The Liberator, The First Wave, The Bedford Boys, and The Longest Winter, presented. He traced the life of Felix Sparks, a World War II military officer who commanded the Thunderbird Unit that liberated the Dakha Concentration Camp on April 29th, 1945. Mr. Kershaw encouraged our students to be active citizens and not bystanders. And he shared advice that a good life is achieved through helping and serving others. It was incredibly powerful, and I'm really grateful for the opportunity for our students to have this kind of event as part of their school day. And I want to thank Dr. Fine. I want to thank Mr. Cottle, who did an outstanding job of organizing that. I could tell that he had done a lot of background work to be prepared for what a powerful event that was going to be. And thank you to the community members who also supported that. So it just was awesome. The Bexley Education Foundation had its first meeting of the fall on September 18th. The meeting started with a tour of a model technology classroom at Montrose. That was funded by a foundation grant awarded last fall. There are similar technology model rooms in each of our five buildings. A big thank you to Addie Young, the district's faculty representative on the BEF Board, who showed us some of the features in those model technology classrooms that helped support our student learning. The foundation hosted the Bexley High School Athletic Hall of Fame induction event on September 19th, at which five former BHS athletes were honored for their athletic and coaching accomplishments. It was a great weekend. And finally, everybody should save the date for the foundation's annual fundraising event this year. It is not Bravo. It is a spirited evening for the foundation, and it will be held on Saturday, February 28th, 2026, at the offices of the Middle West Spirits on Allen Creek Drive. So we'll have more details to come on that. My other report tonight is the legislative stuff. The OSBA's Annual Capitol Conference is next month. The board's delegates to the business meeting will be asked to vote on proposed changes to the OSBA's legislative platform. That's the platform that they use to lobby on behalf of all of their member districts. As I've done in the past, I will circulate to the board members the proposed changes to the platform. There are several. And I will get those out to the board between now and our next board meeting, not for discussion other than at the November board meeting, which is right before the Capitol Conference this year. So I will get that to you. I have been reporting regularly on the legislative attention to property tax reform. Issues around property tax reform are super important to our community and to our district. Our district receives approximately 63% of its revenue from property tax revenue. So as you will recall, the governor vetoed certain provisions of the budget bill, House Bill 96. One of those was Item 66. The Senate has now sort of concurred with the House in overriding that specific veto, which prohibits districts from pursuing replacement property tax levies as well as fix some emergency, substitute emergency, and combined school district income tax and fix some property taxes. That will become effective December 30th, and I think Kyle's going to do a better job of talking about that than I can. The governor had put together a property tax reform working group. I had reported that we would expect their proposals and their recommendations at the end of September. We did get that. There were 20 specific proposals. I'm going to just highlight a few of them. The working group supports allowing county budget commissioners to reduce levies that are deemed unnecessary or that are deemed excessive. Reductions could occur five years after a levy is first approved or two years after a renewal with a public hearing. The working group supports limiting carryover balances for all taxing districts to 100%. So you'll recall that we had something similar to that in House Bill 96, the budget bill. That was, I think, at 40% by the time it got finalized in the budget bill. That was pulled out, and now it's got its own bill that will be considered. The working group supports House Bill 186, as amended this past June. I'm going to, I know that Kyle will talk about that better than I will, so I'll leave that. The working group supports implementing a tax-deferred program for qualified seniors. It supports consideration of expanding the homestead exemption or implementing a property tax circuit breaker. There's been a lot of discussion of those things. And finally, I thought it was interesting that the working group talked about and supports housing initiatives, recognizing that a limitation on available housing has an impact on property taxes. So we'll continue to watch that. In other legislative news, the state senate voted to pass House Bill 57 as amended. That's a bill that was sponsored by Dontavious Gerald's and Josh Williams. The bill now heads to the governor's desk for signature. The bill will require any public or non-public school that elects to keep a supply of an overdose reversal drug for emergency use to adopt and implement a policy regarding the supply's maintenance and the drug's use. So if, you know, we'll take a look at that when it, if the governor signs it, which I expect that he will. Just as an aside, House Bill 57 was amended at the last minute in the Senate to include further revisions to the release time for religious instruction. So as we continue to look at revisions to our policies, there are very often new changes that we have to look at, so we'll look at that. Other recent bills that I will watch include House Bill 473, which would end the practice of pension pickup across all levels of Ohio government. This issue was originally part of House Bill 96. It also did not get to the finish line, but it has now been introduced in its own House bill, which is that 473. If enacted into law, the bill would prohibit public employers, like our school district, from paying the employee share of retirement contributions to state pension systems. So that's one of many bills that I will continue to watch. Any questions for me on any of that? That's all I've got. I'll turn it over to Dr. Fine. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We appreciate all the work that you're doing outside of, obviously, the meetings that we have. It's all the work that happens outside of that. Before I get to the celebrations of September, October, I want to thank the staff at Montrose. So this afternoon, we had a fourth-grade field trip, and there was a shutdown on 270, and our bus, two buses got caught in that shutdown, and our staff did a phenomenal job. Our students did a phenomenal job. Our families did a phenomenal job. That is stressful. That is scary, and we appreciate the staff sticking around. We implemented our reunification plan, which is a big part of our security process that we have. And we were able to, buses didn't pull in here until about 4:50 p.m. I was on the phone with Principal Clayton just before I walked in here. Casey was able to assist through the process. And we were able to reunify all students with their families in an orderly fashion within about 10, 12 minutes. So a huge thank you to the staff. That is not easy. Obviously, it was not the plan for the day, but we really appreciate the quick action, the communication by Carol to our families to make sure folks knew what was happening with the updates throughout the day. So a huge shout out to our entire Montrose community. Also, a huge shout out, Harley had a grandbaby, his second, correct? And Carol tomorrow is having her first twin. Grandbabies coming. And Carol tomorrow is having her first twin. Grandbaby's coming, so exciting stuff for our folks. The reason I say that is work-life balance is important, and we're really thankful for our team. They keep showing up, and there's a lot going on in our own lives. We really appreciate that. September, October is no different. Lots going on, lots to celebrate. It is National Instructional Coaches Day. Katie, Katie, Gina, Samina, Bob, they are world-class. We've had some Friday night fun every weekend. We've got Stick It To Cancer fundraiser. You see Amy Acton. She spent time with our students at our first-ever inaugural Lions lead, led by Nancy Mallory, teacher at the high school, and Jason Cottle, our principal, with the generous generosity of Richard Stoff, community member. A fantastic day with several community members talking to our students about leadership and character, and we really appreciate that. We also love our band, and our alumni band was with us, I guess, two weeks ago. They were fantastic. Always love seeing our alumni back in the space. Top right corner is the picture that Patrick and Joanne have been talking about, people digging in to talk about our facilities and our finances. We've got Basketball Jones at Cassingham talking about culture. October is LGBTQIA+ History Month. We've got our homecoming festivities with our Monarchs, Amaya and Rowan, really proud of them. It's National Principals Month. Rachel, Jason, Naisha, David, and Jerome are world-class. It is World Teachers' Day in October. Our volleyball, our sports are in full speed. We're getting into tournament time. Saw them play last night. Did a fantastic job. It is National Information Technology Professionals' Day. You've got Brad and his team, Reg, Pam, Tracy, Bob. We're really thankful for all that they do. Dr. Biggs talked a little bit about that. And our middle school cross-country league champs. It's a big deal. The future is bright, and it's National Hispanic Heritage Month as well. So a lot more to celebrate. It's got, we've got theater productions coming up, Walk the Bike Month, cardboard challenges, walking clubs, field trips, choir concerts, and much more. Lots to schedule and celebrate in our September and October celebrations. Before I introduce Dr. Williams, who I appreciate being in the space, I also want to acknowledge to everyone who was here this evening that came to talk and to hear about safety. While we place enormous emphasis on providing a very high-quality education for every student in our schools, the only thing we take more seriously is their safety and security. Working to keep our building safe is what we do every single day. Every day, we administer our safety plan in each of our buildings. Every day, we monitor our buildings to ensure our security protocols are working properly. We do not emphasize safety and security only when concerns are heightened. We do it every single day. Safety will always be our highest priority. I want to emphasize that we have a tremendous relationship with Chief Lewis and Mayor Kessler, and they are extremely responsive to the concerns and the needs of our schools. Over the past couple of weeks, the Bexley Police have increased patrols at and around all of our buildings, including for some of our after-hour events, and have added foot patrols on the perimeter of our buildings. Our partnership is strong, and we are truly grateful for Chief Lewis and his officers. They are dedicated to keeping our community safe, and we thank them. Outside of our regular and ongoing collaboration with city officials, I have maintained near constant contact with Chief Lewis since the resident safety situation began. Within just a couple of minutes after receiving notice from one of our principals, I confirmed the details of the person's first concerning Facebook posts and promptly notified Chief Lewis within one minute after verifying it was a recent and authentic situation. We sent our first message to our faculty and staff in less than one hour, and we communicated with school families shortly after, and that has been the communication pattern we have followed throughout. When we are notified and receive new details that are concerning, we take them seriously, and we act swiftly to investigate, enact a plan, and communicate, first with our faculty and staff, and then with our families. What we will not share with our families or anyone outside of our schools is the full safety and security measures we employ each day to keep everyone in our building safe. Our safety plan operates within the parameters of school board policy, and as most people know, is protected by Ohio law. Our safety overview for parents and students document is on our website and provides a summary of our security premises and procedures. We have shared it multiple times with families in the past and more so over the past month. To emphasize again, we have tremendous faith in our Emergency Action Plan, which is the formal name of our safety and security effort. We repeatedly and continually emphasize safety with faculty, staff, and students, especially our older students, underscoring that we all must work together to help ensure proper procedures and rules are followed. In fact, we included a door safety reminder notice to families again last week, the second since school has begun. We require adults to follow our stated and expected procedures when visiting all buildings. To be clear, our buildings will stay secure when our adult visitors follow our stated entry procedures. Truly, we are stronger and our schools are safest when we all work together. I implore everyone, if you see something, please say something. If you see or learn of something concerning, contact the Bexley Police or immediately share the information with a school leader or administrator. We will always investigate safety and security concerns and immediately contact the Bexley Police if needed. As a final reminder, Chief Lewis has maintained all along that he does not believe there is an imminent threat to anyone in our schools. We depend upon his guidance and threat assessment whenever concerns arise, and we will continue to work in partnership with him and his officers. Finally, if someone has concerns or questions about the situation with the former student, please contact the Bexley Police. If you have concerns or questions about the safety and security of our schools, then please contact your building's principal, Dr. Williams, or myself. Again, I thank everyone for being here, and now I'd like to introduce Dr. Harley Williams, our Director of Facilities and Operations, who also oversees safety and security. He will provide our annual safety and security update to the board this evening. Thank you. Thank you, Harley.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for the time I have tonight. Before I begin the presentation, I'd be remiss if I did not emphasize that statistically speaking, schools are safe places. With that said, the tragic loss of any life at school, when that does occur, it creates trauma and creates fear, and so in our roles, we have to prepare for the worst. So some of the things I'll share today are some of the steps that we've taken. Planning and preparation begins with community value of balancing safety and openness to parents and the general public. As you will see later in our later slides, it focuses, it has been and continues to be on time-saving measures and early warnings and notifications to both Bexley Police, our staff, or students. Deter and delay, if you will. Situations involving a school shooter is also different. They also, they're different. They have different variations of that that you have to plan for. So our plans have to be flexible to address various situations. To underscore the importance of having, I'm on a different slide here. I don't know if we got the right, if we don't have the right, doesn't look like we have the right presentation.
Share with you Brad, make sure you have the accurate one. Just to share with you a few moments. Link the screen.
Do you have that?
Make sure that's in my phone, all right?
You guys want to see pictures of my grandson? Perfect, and thank you, and apologize. Okay, as we're planning and building our protocols of safety and security, we also keep things in mind as we're developing these, and that's, there is definitely an inverse relationship between security and convenience, and there's a continuum, and things keep moving over the years. I've been, I've been in education for 39 years. I've been in this, as an administrator in Bexley for 26, and I've, and I've been around from Columbine to Uvalde, and I've seen movements on that continuum after every tragic event. But our approach is always in, we must place a higher priority on the safety of those in the building over the convenience of others when it's appropriate. And there's also that balance we have to maintain as we're developing our plans and protocols, is that we don't want it to look like we're entering a prison or any kind of fortress or something like that. So it's that balance between keeping it safe and secure, but also having that warm school environment when you walk in and you feel like you're definitely in a school. And so I want that, that's always at the forefront of our, at our thought process as well, as well as the data. We, you know, we look at data, and we try to examine, and we learn. I mean, there's the constant evolution after each tragic event that we try to learn from as well. So I'm a big believer in keeping it simple, because we have so many people to train. We've got certified staff, classified staff, bus drivers, coaches, adjunct coaches, things like that, on how to keep, how to handle a crisis. And a crisis doesn't just have to be a school shooter. Crisis could be someone who broke their leg on a playground at recess. It could be a student having an epileptic seizure in the hallway. And so we tell our staff, and we try to get, enforce three priorities when it comes to crisis and safety management, and that is, first thing you do is you've got to keep kids safe in any crisis. So protect the kids, and the second thing you do is you call for help. Find help somehow. You notify, and that help could be a principal. It could be 911, depending on the situation. So it flows across all the different variants of crisis. And then the last thing we tell teachers, and it's, we say, just don't make the matters worse. And that's sometimes hard to explain, but I say, give me the situation. I can tell you how you could make a situation worse. And we had, we had training this summer, I'll share with you a little bit later, with the Department of Homeland Security, met with us, our district leaders, Bexley Police, Bomb Squad, Columbus Bomb Squad, and, and the speaker gave an analogy about EMTs. When you see an EMT going to a crisis situation, they're always in control. They're not running mad sprint. They have, they want to, they want to create a presence and a sense of they know what they're doing, we're in control, and that's how they behave. And so that, you know, making that situation worse would be losing that kind of control, acting chaotic, panicking, things like that. Let's talk a little bit about our operating procedures and our response plans. Each year, we collaborate with the Columbus Fire Department and Bexley Police Department, and as per our board policy and Ohio law, every three years, we work with them to develop our emergency operating procedures and emergency response plans. Once our plans have been signed off by our local first responders, we then have to submit them to the Ohio Department of Education's Ohio School Safety Center for approval. These documents are not shared with the public, and they are not available for public records. However, we have created a document, and at first, I, when I first took this role in 2019 or so, we didn't share anything with the public, and, and we were being asked and challenged with that, and my thinking was challenged, and, and I thought there were some good points that were made. So what we've done is that I, we, our first document we created was a school safety overview for administrators. That has everything that every new administrator needs to know coming into our district, now what passwords would be for this program, this program. That's high-level stuff that only they should know, and it's highly confidential. But there were some things that we thought our teachers needed to know, so we created another version of that handout, that document, and we did it for teachers and staff. Stuff that they can know without compromising the higher-level stuff, a teacher should know that information as well. Challenge thinking later on, saying, well, what about us, parents and students? So that's when we created the school safety overview for parents and students. So that's been, that's what, you'll see a difference, a slight subtle difference in things that teachers might have, that parents and students can see, but it's, it's the plan that we think is appropriate for parents to have and to share with their students. And so that, yes, Dr. Fine mentioned earlier, that can be found on our district webpage under the Resources tab or under my tab under the Director of Facilities and Operations. All right, so in 2019, we, when I took this position, John Ikenberry and I, we started to brainstorm, okay. We sat around for half a day and said, what, what's our priorities? What do we do? And we looked at data. We studied what different schools were doing, and we said, you know what, let's get some eyes on our, let's do a vulnerability study. So we used Bexley Police officers, conducted a vulnerability study of our facilities, and we hired an outside security consultant to come out and give us a report, and we thought between these two sets of eyes, we would get a lot of information. Our strengths were identified on both reports. Our strengths that was identified was that our interior and exterior door locking systems, the relationships that our students said they had with our staff and other adults in a building, and our close proximity to the Bexley Police Department. So you'll hear me touch upon these strengths throughout my presentation, but right now, I'd just like to say a little bit about our door locking systems, because that has evolved over time. Our doors and door locking systems allow us to put exterior doors, right now automatically lock and unlock, and there's no longer just a key needed to open and access. We have Bluetooth technology now. Teachers have codes, people have codes that they can punch to get in. We have, again, on that balance of continuum between convenience and security, we do allow our students to give, we give them their code to get in for extracurriculars that happen outside the school day between the hours, after-school hours. I won't go into those specific details, but they can get access for their extracurricular events and stuff like that. That's our, that's our secondary, six through 12 students have that access. And I, and I think the one thing I want to talk about, what, I'm, you're going to hear me talk a few times tonight about doors, right? Getting behind a locked door in a crisis or the school and shooter, a threat, or something like that. Our doors are, are definitely one of the strengths that we have. Our doors are metal-framed. Our doors have small windows with wire mesh in there, so they're not, they're not going to be easily, they could be broken, but they're not going to be able to reach through the door without, with that wire mesh there. They have, and we put interior quick locks on every door, so no longer does a teacher have to go out in the hallway, use their key to lock the door and have it back in, or they can do it with a switch. Simple things, but, you know, when you have over 350 doors in a district, you know, and they're, you know, it's a cost to each one of these door locks, but we've got those all put in, and I think that wasn't an easy task, but I'm happy to say that it only took us a couple of years to get all that done and caught up. You'll see sometimes, we, because when we're trying to bring in 100, 1,500 students, especially at the Cassingham complex, we'll have staff members at a door, not at the main entrance, and they'll be there to visibly see who's entering the building. We never open up the doors as we did probably before Uvalde. Might have been open a door and let a prop open while we're taking the garbage out or whatever. We have made a commitment to one another in our, in our buildings that we would not do that, and I would say a lot of headbutting sometimes with people who don't take that seriously, but I, I think we've made a lot of progress in that as well. It's not perfect. We still have to find out, why did you prop the door open for? I don't care if it's 20 feet away or whatever. You don't do that. That's a commitment we've made to one another.
I wouldn't interrupt there, Harley.
Yeah.
When we see a door propped, anyone in our community, we close the door. We then notify Harley, and we go to the video to find out who propped the door, and we take action. We re-educate, we communicate, and, and hold them accountable. We are not propping our doors.
Period.
And we, that's a, that is a real commitment that we've been working toward.
And we also know that positive relationships and trust with our students is essential. It's an essential element to our safety plan. So students must know they have a trusted adult in the building and know who to go to whenever they become concerned about a peer's safety or the safety of others in our school. Our relationship with Bexley Police, as you mentioned, has been fantastic. Our relationship with Bexley Police, as you mentioned, has been fantastic. I work quite closely with Detective Overly, or excuse me, Lieutenant Overly now, and Chief Lewis, and Officer Jeremy Grimes, who I have him on speed dial whenever I have a question or have questions, they're always there to provide support that I need. But we've also, in my 26 years as an administrator, I can tell you that whenever I've had an issue and I needed to call the police to be at the school for whatever reason, the response time is incredible. I think we have four officers within a two square mile radius all the time, so they're on site within three minutes. And so our proximity is great, but it's not really that. It's the response time that's what's, what's powerful, is that they get to our building and they can provide the support that we need in a short amount of time. Police in Bexley are equipped with numerous ways to access our building and classroom doors. They are trained to enter the building upon arrival. And I'll repeat that, they're trained, they are trained to enter the building whenever I call for crisis upon arrival. Uvalde, we saw the mistakes that were made there. I actually got to train with some of Uvalde Police Officers on reunification in San Antonio here last year. They made some terrible mistakes. Those mistakes, I've been assured, are not protocol and training. When they come in, first one arrives, first one in. And, and as you know, Dr. Fine and President Powers, we meet with Chief Lewis and the mayor and the city, city representatives quarterly to talk about not a lot of things, but safety and security is always on the agenda in our program. And like I said, I meet monthly with Lieutenant Overly as well, and we plan for drills, we review scenarios, we see what's happening in other schools, we compare that to how, what information, you know, talk about MIRP in a little bit, but will, something happens in Whitehall, then we want to know, okay, does our, does our emergency response plan reflect on what we should do should that happen here? We call that MIRP, or Mobile Emergency Response Plan. And if it doesn't, it's customizable and I can go in there and change it. We have made some changes to it, especially after the Owentangie bomb threat last year. We got to spend a lot of time with that as well. In addition, our ability to contact police, they, we have these radios and our radio system has a channel that allows me to connect directly with a dispatcher who has this very model sitting on their dispatcher's desk. So when I need a police officer or any administrator or anyone with this radio, excuse me, anyone with the radio, they can call for help right away. They don't have to get their phones out of work memorizing a number or dial 911. And there's a button on this radio that we had programmed, so when I hold this button down for two seconds, the 911 channel pops up and I can, I won't do it now, but I can get on there and go, "Bexley dispatcher, this is Harley Williams from Bexley Schools. Do you copy? Radio check." And, and they'll get, I'll get a response back. "Yes, copy loud clear. Is everything good there?" "Yes, everything good, just radio check." So it's nice to knowing that wherever I'm with the radio, I can, or anyone with a radio at an athletic event, at a school, these radios have instant access to the dispatcher of Bexley Police Department. As I said, they have access through our Bluetooth technology as well to get into our buildings. We have keys that are set aside for them as well. And in our building, we walk in, we've got maps of every building attached to the wall. That's good for visitors, but in a time of crisis, it's something they rip off as well and can carry with them if they're, we're trying to find rooms and stuff like that. And police come into our buildings, you know, we encourage them to come in on, on vacations and days when students aren't in there and we get them to tour the building to make sure they get, walk around and see what our buildings are like, so it's not the first time they have there. We created, we found out during those, during those trainings, and it's not on my slide here, but it just came to me, is that we discovered that they lost their radio contact in certain parts of our building, especially in the weight room and the basement area. So last year, we worked with a company and created amplifiers for their Marx radios. And we've tested that this year and they all have communication throughout our buildings, even the deepest parts of our building. We really appreciate the working relationship we have with our Bexley Police Department. And then some of the needs that were brought up, and I'll spend a lot of time, the rest of, most of the time, talking about what we've done to address the needs. So the needs that popped up on those two vulnerability studies is that our training and drills were very basic, very generic. We weren't taking them too seriously, it was emotion, it was back, but no one was really trying to learn from them and grow from those drills, what's really what they're supposed to be for. We also needed to have some way to enhance the alert notification system. They were worried about our system at the time, it was about using the P A system to call for a lockdown. Well, if I'm not by a P A system, how am I going to do that? And the campus, the size of Bexley, Cassingham Complex, that's a lot of, that's communication that needs to get to a lot of people in, in short order. And then other time-saving measures, because we know deter and delay is kind of our mantra when it comes to setting up school safety securities. And again, when you're talking about training and drills, we, we do this in a way that's age-appropriate. We don't want to create trauma for the sake of doing a drill and training. There's, I, I had a first sergeant when I was in the National Guard and we were setting up training, and he was a big believer that we need to have, our soldiers needed to have sleep deprivation. And I never understood that one, but you do what top tells you to do and you follow along. But we would train all day long and then they would have, things would break up or night. And I always had a, and I remember saying to him, I go, "Top, I don't think people need practice being miserable. We'll, we'll figure that out when we have to do it." And so our approach to training, I kind of follow the same way. I'm not going to put together crazy training scenarios so that we could, you know, test, test, you know, have bodies in the hallway and let our first responders come down and do that. We can do that through tabletop and functional exercises. We, we talk about that stuff. We do functional training, but we don't do full scale or bring students into training, we think is traumatic. But tabletop exercises give us that, that we get to have those conversations. And again, there'll be more slides talking about training here coming up. In the P A system, I guess say when that, that's a problem. So we reviewed multiple alarm systems and notification systems back in that day. And there are a lot of nice ones out there. There are some, we, there was, there was one that was just so costly that it was just, it was, it was amazing that, I don't know if sure if they're still in business, but we found a company that had the same supports, and they're a local company, and if I call them right now on the telephone, he will pick up, which I appreciate greatly. But we found a local company that gives us a alarm system that automatically sends out instant notifications to every single staff member and leader in the building whenever an alarm is triggered. It sends out a phone call to the Bexley Police Department automatically. And all the, at least at the time, last, you know, I'm not sure about new officers in the last two or three months, but as of last, beginning of the last summer, we had every officer, especially on first shift, had, would get, had their cell phone numbers, personal cell phone numbers, that they would get a text alert as well. And so when we had a false alarm last year, when someone was throwing a ball in the weight room and it hit one of those alarms and triggered the alarm, we had, we had police officers who got the message on text there before we could even, I could get up and start trying to figure out what was going on. So when I say the response time is incredible, it's not just, we've seen it. So again, those are, it's about communication and, and speed and then trying to protect our kids as much as we can and for at least, and we'll talk about the timing and some statistics around this as well. Another quote that I'll share with you is that, when it comes to training, is that, and we used to use, is that, "Under pressure, you don't rise to the occasion, you sink to your level of preparedness." Right? You don't expect, well, we'll figure it out when we get to it. If it ever happens, we'll get to it. Well, you, you have to know what to do. And again, whether that's a tabletop or functional exercise or hands-on activities, you have to know what you do, you have to rehearse it somewhere so it becomes some type of a memory response. And I'm going to, I'm going to, I want to share with you in the next couple of slides here, what we've done as far as training. And mind you, we're an educational institution. I'm quite proud of the amount of time that we've given and dedicated to training our staff and our district leaders on, on these topics. So we focused early on about threat assessment training and school safety teams when I first got there. Attended a lot of workshops, whether it's the University of Virginia model, the Secret Service model. We found that there were parts and components to both models that we liked, and we've incorporated both into a, a form and a template that's used to guide these conversations for our threat assessment teams. We did also changed our approach based on giving flexibility to people. Prior to that, our, our approach was simply a lockout, was the only option we really had, we just went to lockdown mode. We, we started training our staff on lockout, takeout, or getout protocols, as well as bleed control techniques. We conducted a full-scale evacuation, reunification. Tabletop exercise began building for what we did last year. COVID kind of slowed us down a little bit in some of our work, but every year, we do conduct a lockdown training, at least one in every year. In May of 2022, we did a gun safety presentation for our community. And then every three years, we train our threat assessment teams. They get training, they get intense training, it's, we bring them in the summer and we go over the protocols and how that should be managed and obtained that well, as well. And again, that, I want to go into this, Deborah Grayson is a community member who brought this gun safety presentation to my attention a couple of years ago and we had that. It was a great tool, it still is a great tool, great information. The concern is, 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 it's, it's, it's not a political issue, it is whether, if you, someone who has weapons in your house, are they secure? Because kids are curious, kids are this, and we don't, we're trying to reduce accidents that way. They give out free locks, they have present, and that's, their presentation and stuff, I believe, is still on our website from that time. And at that time, they, they projected about 42 homes, 42% of the homes in the United States have at least one firearm and help parents guide that conversation. If you don't have weapons in your house, but maybe your, your neighbors do and your kids are playing there and you don't want them to find something under a bed or something like that, that, how to have those conversations. So I, I would like to underscore that training as well because that was a powerful training. As Lee shared early, Lee spearheaded something a few, is Lee still here? He gave up on us, did he leave? Yeah, it's late, but, but Lee was, he was instrumental in getting, he gave some credit to me there, but really the credit belongs to Lee and right now Cindy Tyson, but we have got all of our schools on the AED, on the Project Adam certified list, which is a great accomplishment. And, and so we, we know, we, we advertise now where our AED machines are, how to find them, and, and appreciate all the work he and the city did to help get, and Nationwide Children's Hospital did with that as well. We also brought, we start, we had noticed in 2023, we, we had students that were in a wheelchair and we said, well, what happens on a fire drill when the, when the elevators go out? How are we getting these students down? What if someone is in a boot that can't get down the stairs and stuff? So then we, we began meeting and looking at best practices and came up with what we, we created a manual called the Evacuation Guidelines for Persons with Disabilities. We shared that with everyone. Now, I will say that any student has a mobility issue, there's a plan for them that's developed as part of their IEP or 504. They get a plan built, we know whether or not we can move them from a chair and move into this transport chair, or we can't. And if we can't, then we've got plans set up where they go to an area for rescue, we contact local law enforcement, first responders, and they'll be the ones responsible for that. So that was, that was a lot of work. Another, another thing that I was, I'm quite proud of is what we got accomplished in that for, in that program as well. In 2024, Chief Lewis, he threw, he said, "Let me challenge your thinking one day," and he says, "How's your safety protocols in your athletic venues?" And we thought, okay, let's talk. We'd probably talk, and this is about the same time when I think Groport Canal Winchester had some gunfire at their football games and what would we do? As you'll find out later too, as we'll talk about other things, we have learned and tried to prepare based on things that happened in other schools as well. And we challenged ourselves, okay, what would we do if that was us? How would we manage that situation? And that's where Lieutenant Overly has been very helpful in our planning and Jeremy Grimes, Officer Grimes as well. So we've put together new safety protocols. We started last year and followed them this year. We've increased special duty officers at, at our home football games. We, we bring more special duty officers in and basketball games, other indoor events that have, might have the potential to be more of a rivalry setting and might need crowd control and stuff like that. We have conducted full-scale drills, wanted every student to know where their rally point was. So if you ever had to leave our school because of a situation and you couldn't get home, we want students to know where do you report to? And we had, we walked students so they would see all those. As I said earlier, we conducted bomb threat training this summer. And we also, in August, I had the privilege of working with our district leadership team and how we would set up and, and where the setup materials are located and stored, how we would set up for reunifications should one of our school, just, school buildings become a crime scene and we couldn't get back in and we had to do a reunification off-site. So we spent, we spent a good, solid day going over how that works. And that took, it's a good, it's a good program and we gained the good feedback with, and ideas were being bounced around the table there at that day of training. And again, three years came up again, our building threat team, assessment teams were again, once again, trained. So training has been important and a part of what we do. Alarms and notifications, against staff alert is a product that we use. We have desk alarms, we have glass break alarms, and we have wall monitor alarms as well. As I said earlier, we have about 125 radios across the district and they take them for recess, so they, whenever we need that kind of help as well, we got ways to connect and get the help that we need. Some additional security and time safety features we've had, we've got high-definition camera systems in our, in our, in every building. Recently, we made upgrades in our facilities, a manner in which we vetted visitors who wish to enter our school day at Maryland and Montrose to match the level of security that we had at Cassingham Complex. Most of you probably have gone through that system now, so I won't spend a lot of time talking about that. And again, I will talk, again, I want to talk about, I was a principal in 2018 when Marjorie Stoneman Douglas school shooting occurred. At the time, I was working with the students and how you guys feel about this, what, you know, what, what do we do to make you feel safe? And what I heard at that time, and, and unfortunately, I don't have that same relationship, or I should find out how they feel today. But at that time, they said they felt very safe at school, it's after school that they did, they felt, our doors were always, after school, we used to leave our doors wide open. We unlocked them and let kids come and go. And so what, with, one of the reasons we like Staff Alerter is that I can assign students' passcodes and I can customize the times and the days that they have access. So we don't give students access on the winter, excuse me, on the weekends. And there's certain times each night where they stop, they don't have access anymore. But that way, when they do come in, the door's shut and they lock. But again, we do, we have a lot of activities after school, we have events, we have parent meetings, and yes, there will be some days that those doors will be unlocked. But again, we are not a fortress. We try to set layers of mitigation up to allow that to hap, so that people can get in and access the building when they need it after school hours. And we lock the other doors that aren't necessary for that as well. Again, that continuum between being an open, welcoming and, and security and convenience. Let's see, we have employees and coaches and guest teachers now get immediate access to our Mobile Emergency Response Plan. We have video doorbells aligned with our outdoor locking and unlocking systems, it's something else we put in. It helps for our summer staff who are working. They, the doors, we used to prop them open, not prop them open, we'd leave them unlocked in the summer, but that's like, hey, what about us, those that are working there in the summer? So we put that in, so the doors stay locked, they can open them up from the different offices in the summer. And the last thing I want to say about this too is our active action reviews. I can't say this enough, we, we have learned more about incidents that happened at Owentangie last year, at Whitehall, by talking to their school resource officers, their administrators, their police officers, and we learned from their, what, what they did right, what they did wrong, and we go in and we make changes to what our emergency response plans are in our MIRP system. And again, we can't script every scenario when it comes to school intruder and threats, but on average, as I said earlier, we use data in trying to make our, how we set up our protocols. On average, 90% of all school shootings are over than 10 minutes. So that's deter and delays. We'll get somebody in there, we know Bexley Police get there. We'll get somebody in there, we know Bexley Police get there in three minutes usually, so we're trying to just hunker down if that would ever happen and time for us to, to let the police do their job. And then we also know that there's never been an active shooter event where a lock classroom door has been breached, right? So that led us, that hasn't changed over the years and, and because of that, that's when we focus heavily on our door locking systems in our schools. Each door has a quick way. And then our scenarios, again, lockout, getout, takeout. We want, we want staff to be able to look at their situation and see their surroundings and make decisions. Do I get out with my students? Do I, do I lock out with my students? They have to be trusted to make them decisions as this having one answer and one response for every single situation. We trust them with our kids every day, every school year. So in a time of crisis, it doesn't make sense to me to take away that trust. They'll, I think people will make the right decision. So we arm them with these kind of data as well. You're safe behind a locked door. If you can't get out and get away, you're also safe if you get five, you know, 500 yards away from the thing. You make that call. If you're happened by, you're closer to the exterior door than you are to your classroom door, grab the kids and get outside around you. So we, we try to help use those kind of, we think our protocols gives them flexibility. Again, so some other facts that we, we share with our staff too is that others usually, and our students, we know that others usually knew the plan but failed to report it. And so we created systems for them to do that online and anonymously. And that's that Stay Safe Speak Up program, and we get a lot of information from that. We get, we, fortunately, never had anything about school shooting so much, but we've had so-and-so is considering their, their posts online is making us fearful that they might harm themselves. We get phone calls at nine o'clock when they see that, it's, it's, it's being monitored 24/7, 365. We can get ahold of Bexley Police and ask them to do a well check and share that stuff. It's been, it's been a nice tool as well to keep kids safe. As I shared earlier, that be smart for kids, gun, gun, safety access. And so the relationship we talked about that many attackers felt bullied, so it's so important that, that our kids feel safe and, and they have a trusted adult in the school that they can turn to and talk to when they have a problem. All right, lockout, getout, takeout, I don't, I, I think it's, it's, I won't go into each detail, but that's our, our protocol. And there's not, one of these are prioritized over the other. It's based on your situation. We stress on our website too, Suicide Crisis Lifeline, the Stay Safe Speak Up Hotline has saved, I think, and helped, helped quite a few kids over the years. We know that 49,000 people died in the United States by suicide in 2023 statistically. That means we have about one death every 11 minutes. And so having this kind of information out there and training with our students has been a focus as well. That's, that's just another step that we've taken to try to support our students and help kids in need. Our goal is not to stop, is not only to stop a violent event, but try to find ways to prevent it from happening in the first place. Kids don't typically just snap, you know, and planned attacks beforehand, they're planning off behaviors observable and follows a pathway to violence. As I stated earlier, school shooters usually tell others beforehand they are planning a school shooting event. Thus, if we can identify behaviors that may signal someone is on a path to violence, we can maybe intervene earlier and help them, get them off that path. To prevent and remove a student from a pathway to violence, we focus on actions and our school culture and our relationships, and especially our behavioral threat assessment teams. There are two types in, in our safety planning and while our protocols, we have to, we have to prepare. Someone said, a lot of the school shootings happen with someone who knows the school system. So that we have, we have a system for, we have program, we have protocols in place for those students, our students that are currently in or recently a part of our students. We also have plans for people who are not a part of our school system. So we, we plan for both types. And some of the things that we just jotted down with the principals one day, what are some of the things you're doing to help build these relationships? I added gaggle. I think that you shared some of that today. Another monitor, that's another step that we've taken to try to, to catch students and get them off that track early as possible. So I appreciate Brad's work and leadership on that as well. All these things, we, we try to pay attention, just harden our buildings and stuff like So I think next steps, as many of you know, I've announced the beginning of this year that this 26 year in Bexley is going to be my last, I'm going to be a full-time ground pole and, and the 39 year career. So I, it's, I know someone will be in and they'll come in here probably with other ideas, newer ideas. And I don't want to get too far down the road for somebody else's work, but I would strongly suggest these steps be followed in the future and ones that we're continuing to work on this year ourselves. One is that got to continue collaboration that we have with Bexley Police and our security consultant as well as other first responders. We're looking at ways how to improve our playground safety right now through our gate access system. We are looking at AI tools and how that can be maybe merged with our camera system to help increase, enhance our safety and security. And we are exploring door alarms, but as Dr. Fine said, we have done a nice job, our staff has done a fantastic job of not propping doors, but when they are not latched or they are propped, we need to know about them sooner rather than later. So we've got all the doors right now equipped and wired to set up for alarms and notifications. We just got to get, figure out how that all works and put it, put it in play. And that's one of my goals and John Eichenberry's goal for this school year. How can parents help? I think if you could just discuss a model how to safely get to and from school is a good idea. We, again, obviously, we have less control outside of our campuses, but we continue about, we continue to worry about our students getting to and from school. I, I said to the staff at the beginning of the year, my biggest concern right now for injury are the morning scooters and the bicycle riders, especially as you're coming into Castingham Complex's playground, the sun is right in your eyes as you're pulling into it and these, and, and they're, they're kids and I get it, but they're shooting in between cars and this. And that's my biggest fear right now is that someone's going to get hurt that way. Or the same way with the crosswalk at, at Castingham and Broad Street or Main Street. That sun, when it's coming up, can be right in some driver's eyes. So we, John and I, we spent a few days at the beginning of every school year and we talked to the students and just remind them, hey, even though that light says it's good to go, keep in mind that driver might not be able to see that that, might not even be able to see a light there, that all they see is the sun. So always, you know, make sure that that light can be a liar and you make sure cars are stopped. So we, we focus on a lot of things, not just school shooters and other things, but we do try to keep kids safe in many different ways. And again, I guess review the safety overview document. And again, the last thing I would say is we all, I mean, we all are, everyone in this room, every parent, we are all safety compliance officers and we all have to help, help, help when we see something, got to say something. And we all have to build that culture of care so that students know that they have a trusted adult they can go to. That's as powerful as any other tool in, in our arsenal. I, again, I apologize for the length of the presentation, but we've had, I just, I think it's important to know that, I, I'm sure I missed a lot of things, but I wanted you to be aware of as many things that give you at least a sense of comfort that we are paying attention to this, we are training against our protocols, we are doing what we can to keep our students and our staff and our school community safe when they're in our Bexley City Schools.
Thank you so much, Dr. Williams. Do people have questions?
Just being a healthcare provider and a former wrestler, drilling things, and when I was in grade school, we drilled for tornadoes without exception, from kindergarten all the way up. Everybody remembers landing on the ground out in the hallway. And I'm just playing this out in my head that I would rather my child know what to do. I mean, with the technological age that we're in, every child has, knows that there have been shootings. So why wouldn't we arm them, you know, with what, how to save themselves? You know what I mean? And if we don't drill, even, even people that have gone through years of training in the ER and a crisis occurs, we have had, I was in the Navy and a company commander, not a commander, a commanding officer was standing there, his first code, and he just locked up. And this guy's life is in the balance and we had to take him out of the way and get, because no one knows what you're going to do. People talk about it all the time. Somebody come through that door, I'm going to do this. You don't know what you're going to do till it happens. But I need my child or the children that we're responsible for to at least have heard it, drilled it, so they're not thinking, they're just doing. They don't even know why they're doing it maybe. This is what they said I should do. And for the ones that can put that together, they might save their lives. So that's, I mean, I don't know if that's a question, you know what I mean? Sorry.
No, no, fine.
Other questions? I had, do you, go ahead.
So our three-year plan, when do we do the next three-year plan?
For our, I think in '27.
And just out of curiosity, you used to submit the three-year plan, but do they, do they provide us feedback or do we just, I mean, do we continue that working relationship over, how does that work?
It's, it's not so much feedback, but if you're missing a component, it has not, they inspect and make sure that it's been completed and they trust. My understanding is that if the chief signs off on it and he reviews it and he signs off on that, that gives them a sense of confidence. When the, when the chief fire inspector signs off on it, that gives them a, a sense of confidence. So we have to have, have our plans got to be put into this document and then it has to be signed off by first, local first responders. Once that's done, we send it in. And I think honestly, I think the state of Ohio, I don't know, I can't say for sure, but I get the impression it's like, okay, do you, as yours in, they check and see if, you know, they'll remind, send a reminder saying, hey, reminder, next year, you're due for this or whatever. But I don't know if they, how much detail they actually explore or they just make sure that it's been completed. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Yeah, so when you say chief, so our local police, a local police chief will approve it as well as a local fire department, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they sign off on it.
I was just going to say thank you for recapping some of the things that as a parent who's been around for several years, I've seen these workshops, I've heard about the, you know, them becoming, me becoming a part of the board and just hearing about the teacher training, just like, this is part of who we are at Bexley. And your, your leadership and, and galvanizing and, and holding this together have been very impressive and just to see it there. So as a parent of two graduates and now a third one coming up pretty soon, I've seen it. And also the, the change in my mind, right? Like, okay, I'm used to a certain way of doing things back in 2010. It's like, no, those doors are locked, Jonathan, don't try and, you know, go, go around or something like that, you know? So there's a part where we had some habits of like, oh, the door is always locked or unlocked, you go this way or something like that. But like, you helped change behaviors by education.
Thank you. And I will add to, Mike, I, one thing I didn't put in there is we've had to create protocols around dismissal and entry due to severe weather. And, and last year, I kid you not, we must've had five lightning storms right at elementary dismissal. And so they, they able to put that in play and I, and I didn't get to, all the principals did a good job. I just happened to be at Castingham helping Mr. Schottner and I just remember that quote we heard from Homeland Security, how calm he was in trying to handle a chaotic situation. He did a nice job. It was nice to see a plan when you take the time to memorialize it, to put it into play and have it action. But I still, I still hear, I still hear your point that you were making earlier in your statement.
Well, I did have a number of questions. I shared them with you prior to this evening's discussion and you've answered them all. So really appreciate that. I want to just add my gratitude like Dr. Baker has done. It's a really comprehensive presentation you've given us this evening. I'm so grateful for that. I'm very grateful for the training that you do, for the work that you do every day to keep our schools safe, for the work that you do with our first responders and our police. I know you meet with them regularly, with the chief, with the lieutenant, with the officers. It means a lot to all of us. I'm grateful to all of those first responders for the support that they give us. And as you say, they're super responsive. So I don't have anything else to ask. I'm really grateful. Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's my report.
Thank you. As we move forward, we'll go into item five. I always ask if there's something people want to pull out. I'm going to pull out the, Joanne talked a little bit about board policies, item 5E. I just want to quickly say, you know, basically what Joanne said, but I'm going to pull those out. Anything else anybody wants to pull off the consent agenda to talk about? If not, I would accept a motion to approve items 5B, 5C, 5D, and then we'll take 5F separately.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of those, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. On 5E, I want to note that the, Joanne talked about the two policies that we have up tonight that are up for first read. BF is our board policy development and, and adoption. And Joanne talked a little bit about the changes to that. We previously, before the OSBA suggested to us, we made changes to that policy that permits us to adopt policies to become effective after a first read if there's what we would consider an emergency situation. So we've, we've updated BF, but that's not really what we're doing as Joanne explained in our changes to BF. But we are going to do that tonight with J E F B. We've done it before. When there's a law that becomes in effect right now, for example, we often ha, and we've done this, you know, this year and we did it last year, we approve a policy that we have adjusted or a new policy, and we approve it effective as of the first read so that we can be compliant with law if we're going to approve it. But then we can do a second read and if there are any adjustments that we want to make, we can make them in our second read. So J E F B, release time for religious instruction, we approved that this past summer, but there were changes that became effective as a result of House Bill 96. There are potentially more changes coming through House Bill 57. But the changes, as Joanne described, are really to make it clear that anything that comes back from a, you know, a release time instruction event needs to be treated the same way anything else that would come into the schools with a kiddo, that there are policies in place and in particular are student handbooks that say what students would need to do with that stuff when it comes back into the school. So that's, those are the changes that I wanted to talk about. Are there any questions about those two policies? If not, I'll move to approve item 5E, approval of board policies. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of approval of 5E, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries and we'll turn it over to Mr. Smith.
Thank you. So tonight is forecast night. Thank you. And I don't know whether to call it a five-year forecast, a three-year forecast or a four-year forecast. Actually, I do, I am going to call it a five-year forecast. But it's kind of unsure what to call it because of House Bill 96 and the changing of But it's kind of unsure what to call it because of House Bill 96 and the changing of the requirements of this filing. So ODEW functionally says that school districts may think of this change as a shift to a four-year submission, which includes a current year budget plus three forecasted years. I'll probably still call it a five-year forecast because I believe it's best practice presenting and evaluating information in a five-year period. We're used to it and our finance committee is used to it. But this change did not come from recommendations from school treasures. Shocker. So the changes from House Bill 96 moved the deadline to October 15th for this year as the first filing. It used to be November. Six, seven years ago, it used to be October 31st. But going forward for next year, it'll be August 31st and it'll stay with the end of February. Even though that there are some change, even though that there are some things that don't make sense to a treasurer of why you would have a, a budget year when we are not required to file our budget with the county auditor fully until September 30th. We have temporaries that do July 1st, but the full one's not till September 30th. So why would you have a budget year in a forecast which not, which is not really due? And then the second half or the second filing in February, most schools have not finalized budgets for the next year. I have not required our administrators to have those back until March or April and we are still not knowing where staffing needs are in February. So what that means is we'll probably have a few variances, revisions and forecasts between, between these arbitrary legislative deadlines. So just the major lines here, I'll focus on the, the larger blue line in the middle, 6.01, which is our excess revenues and other financing sources over or under expenditures. So the first four years of the forecast, we're pretty much breaking even, $400,000 out of a 53, $54 million budget is, is not a, is not a ton. There is wiggle room, but this is part of that incremental levy plan that we had on the ballot four years ago where we'd be pretty much breaking even. Our revenues would follow our expenditure lines and we'll see that here in a slide. But you can see the fifth year is where we really see deficit spending and that's when that roll off or that ending of the increment stops. But this is all really nothing new or surprising to me. We've kind of known that this forecast would kind of look like this. So nothing in short or in summary has, has been too surprising with, with the numbers within revenues or expenditures. Highlighted in yellow is our target 70-day cash balance policy. And you can see right beneath that in dark purple, in the fourth year of the forecast, that target's 70, but in the fourth year, we're showing 115 days. So still within policy of not, not needing to make any recommendations. Again, we've, we've kind of expected this. And again, I've said, this is just one reason why we should review five years of forecast so we can see like that next year as far out as we can. And you'll see another slide here that I go past the five years. I wanna talk about a, a little bit of a risk in our revenues that we, we didn't talk about in House Bill 96. It was kind of under the radar. We're calling it the piggyback property tax exemptions. So there, this you can see in line 1.05 of the forecast, it's called state tax reimbursement. So a portion of our tax, taxes are reimbursed from the state. And they, there's about three buckets, but this only impacts two buckets. Homeowner occupancy, so if you live in your home, you get a two, two and a half percent credit on your taxes. And then homestead rollback, which is designed more for, I would say targeted assistance for elderly and income limits as well as disability exemptions. And those, well, we'll see the amounts, but new in House Bill 96 authorizes the county budget commissions to really double or piggyback those exemptions. However, there is no reimbursement from the state. So right now, we get reimbursements for that totaling about $686,000 every calendar year, pretty much the same as fiscal year. So that would, that would be at risk here in Franklin County should the budget commission decide to double or piggyback those exemptions. So right now, we see that revenue in line 1.05. However, we would see that doubling or that reduction from line 1.01. Some counties in the state are talking about that. I think the risk here is once a few counties start doing this, others will follow suit. Not weighing in on the, the importance of property tax relief for people in, in these buckets that I called earlier, but there is a, an impact to local school districts as well as other municipalities who receive this reimbursement. It's not just school districts. So I wanted to call out that, that risk for us going forward. Here's the chart with revenue being blue and expenditures being red, really nothing changed from how we expected the incremental levy to, to work. And our ending cash balance there in the, in the green where you kind of see it starts to dip off after us into fiscal year 30, once that increment stops being added on. Here's bars of our cash balance and target is 70 in fiscal year 29. So that's in the middle, but I've added a few more years, years six and seven, just so we can kind of keep that on the radar and, and we'll start to see that maybe not next fiscal year, but the following, depending on various circumstances. But again, this is kind of what we were expecting. I'll pause here for questions. Few other things I wanna highlight that may be risk or at risk to the forecast in the form of property tax reform that's been ongoing for a while. On the far left, House Bill 186 and 129, I would say really don't have an impact to Bexley. They have an impact to public education in the state regarding the 20-mil floor and retroactive inflation. So when you're at the 20-mil floor, House Bill 920 really doesn't impact that school district. We talk about House Bill 920 because as our values increase in Bexley, Bexley Schools doesn't receive any new revenue. District at, at the 20-mil floor, when their values increase, taxes increase, revenue increases for the school district. There's a very large number of school districts across the state at the 20-mil floor. Districts like Bexley, I'll let you kind of figure out which ones those are, are above the 20-mil floor, which means House Bill 920 impacts them. House Bill 129 impacts the levies that are used to that 20-mil floor calculation, kind of related to veto overrides and how, number 66 on how you classify emergency, emergency levies. Emergency levies don't impact that 20-mil floor. In House Bill 129, still it's, it's not been passed yet, but being discussed, is saying those levies would be calculated in that 20-mil floor. Bexley really doesn't have emergency levies, so I'm saying 186, 129 really won't impact us too much. The veto overrides within veto number 66 potentially just limit our options of those levy types. We really haven't used those too much. House Bill 335 is a little more concerning, but it's not been scheduled for a vote. I don't know if it came up today. There were some votes today. I wasn't able to follow what happened at the State House today. But it would limit inside millage growth to 1% per year. It really only happens about every three years when the county updates the values. But my quick look of how that impacts us, of how we forecasted could be $385,000 on the forecast. Because inside millage does receive growth in property tax revenue for the school district and other entities that have inside millage. Inside millage is another way of saying voted or unvoted. So on the, on the pie chart on the right, you can see 14% of our revenue comes from inside millage. The other 86% are voted millage. The inside millage is 5.7 mils.
Just to be clear, Kyle, you said 14% of our revenue, but it's really 14% of our
Sorry, property, property tax. Yeah, the, the title of that pie chart keeps me safe or corrects my, my language. Just a quick few highlights, Ms. Powers talked about the recommendations from the governor's property tax working group. Some concerns are the, and I've, I've listed the numbers and how they are in the working group. Number one, the first recommendation was the authority granted to the county budget commission to deem revenue or levies unnecessary or excessive. I believe that's your job as a board of education and elected body to determine whether you need a levy and if it's excessive or unnecessary. So I believe that might be a reach for another political unelected group, which is the county budget commission. Their support of House Bill 186, which I talked about, not too bad recommendations. LLC loopholes in purchases of property. You can see some maybe unfair valuations or no evaluation changes when property is changed between an LLC. We're used to selling, buying ourselves, but LLCs are in purchases of especially residential's. Community reinvestment areas, I don't think that's too bad of a thing for districts to have disapproval because there's billions of dollars in the state being approved by non-school districts. Carryover cash balance, a limit to $100,000. I put Bexley's threshold or percentage, I should say, estimated at FY '26 to 35%. We've never been too terribly close to 100%. When I was looking at this in the spring, I think our highest ending year percentage was in the 60s. So not too much of a concern for Bexley. And I don't think that's too terribly bad to ask districts to maintain something less than 100%. Another big concern that I have that could impact us is what's called the freedom or the taxpayer freedom trilogy, House Bills 420, 421 and 422. The elimination of continuing tax levies, which all of ours are except the inside millage piece, and making all tax levies subject to renewal. So here's an example. We run the ballot in November for increments totaling 15 mils. All of our millage is 40 roughly this year, 42 next year. I think what 420 is saying is, let's put all 40 mils on the ballot. And if that goes down, what happens? Have no idea. So I don't know that that's really thought out or the consequences of levies failing. House Bill 421 is a process for making inside millage vote to repeal or to continue it. House Bill 422 is something that I think we saw maybe a year or two ago by requiring votes of the people for it to pass of 60% for anything between one and two mils and 66% for anything for two mils and above. So the threshold for approval, much higher than 50% plus one. I've got relevant resources, maybe some, some of my favorite resources. I really liked the Columbus Dispatch opinion that was in there on Sunday, I believe, but recommendations from the property tax working group are linked here. And then the O E P I, the Ohio Education Policy Institute, has a genius of a, of a gentleman that helps and looks at property taxes and analysis and we're a member of that, that group.
Interesting about that O E P I is also that it was a bipartisan group that put that together. It was a former budget, Republican budget director and Democratic, you know, that has some really common sense pieces to it.
A lot of information of, of like how we got here from the 70s to even how inside millage was created in the 1920s or 30s. Lot of historical information. So if you're new to Ohio, that's, I'm wondering why property taxes are such a big deal here.
Yeah, the amounts that the state pays for public education has gone down over the last 20, 30 years. And so there's no wonder that property taxes, which are the avenue for funding the deficit from what the state provides to districts across the whole state, have, have gone up. It's just one of the reasons, but it has a big part of it. And I feel like there's just, almost every time I look, there are two or three new property tax bills being introduced. And I feel like people are planting their flags all over the place and there's gonna have to be a really big effort to figure out which are the ways that our government wants to solve this. And I thought that some of the parts of that working groups thought was, you know, nobody really wants another working group. It's part of what they recommended, but, but some thoughtful people are gonna have to come together and work through those different ideas and recognize that it's, you can't just solve this through property tax. You gotta do it, you know? It seems to me that experts are reminding us that it's a bigger problem. It's gonna require a lot of work. I'm really grateful for all of that and for all of your work, Kyle, on the forecast. I know it's been a crazy, crazy year with all these changes and getting this together for us and adding on to it this analysis of what, what we're gonna see going forward with these changes. It's super helpful and, and important. Does anybody have questions for Kyle on the, on the forecast?
I, I always have questions, you know that, on this. But I think, you know, the, the one graph, the bar graph of our fund balance going down is always interesting to me because, no, the, well, the next one actually, the bar graph. Because I look forward to sitting here six months from now, a year from now, two years, you know, whatever the, in the future, and, and applauding your conservatism and your approach to this forecast because appropriately, I feel like these are oftentimes worst-case scenario situations or conservative, maybe not worst case, but conservative to a point that, that paints a picture of where we need to be, but maybe comes in a little worse looking today than it does in the actual, you know, in 2021, 2029, in 2030. So I always like to kind of track that and pay attention to it and, and see where things come out. You know, the, the projection for the income tax, I think you have it 3%. It's averaged, what, between six and seven? So we have some, some opportunities to, to come in better and extend our levy if that's the choice that we determine to make. But I, I think I have great comfort in the work that you do on the forecast side. Appreciate your advocacy on the legislative side. And someday, we're gonna come into this meeting and there's gonna be some legislation that is good news for school district on the revenue side. I hope I'm on the board to, to see it, but, you know, the, the current makeup of this state, it's hard to envision.
I would love, we're, we're gonna push for changes in the deadlines for the forecast filing. It was an interesting fall to, because you're used to, used to running reports and looking at things with certain amount of data. And then that, that timeline changed the, the data review, not only timing, but what you're looking at. So that was a little different this cycle, but we are hopeful. We've had talks with some legislators already about maybe changing the dates. Let's, August 31st, we hired individuals in the September meeting, or, yeah, in the September meeting. So it'll just make it another thing to explain variances on, which I can do and.
Could you go back a couple slides? I might be guessing wrong. One, two. I'm looking for this. So it might be a different slide, but what I really love is the result of the. But what I really love is the result of the incremental levy that you guys worked on and our community supported, which shows that our, we, I think there's another slide that maybe shows this even more clearly, but that we have, we're not bringing in a whole bunch of money that we're not spending each year through taxes. And so I think it's a really lovely way for our community to appreciate that the work that you guys have done and the board has supported doesn't take more money out of the community in year one to hold on to, and that we take it when we need it. And that's what the incremental levy does. And I think the presentation and what's showing in our five-year forecast reflects that. And I think we should feel really good about that. So I just wanted to call that out again.
Yeah, I, I would say that was one of the talking points. It kind of talks about the cash balance discussion that was in the spring of districts, what's the appropriate amount of cash that they have. And we kind of headed that conversation in the finance committee a year before that. And you kind of see that here in the actual 23 and 24, the district's cash balance, nearly 30 million in those years. And part of our discussion with our community a year ago was, instead of what we typically were used to was a nine or seven mil, nine mil ask, which you see a, a large spike in revenue, and then the revenue stays flat. But the incremental reduces our, our cash balance, which we're okay with, because the, the revenues match and go along with the expenditures.
It's a little scary, but it's great.
Yeah. And Kyle, will you go back to the types of levies where you talked about we're not impacted as much?
Yeah.
I think this is a really important slide, and Kyle hit on it. And huge thank you to Kyle. We're really lucky to have Kyle on our, our district. Although we say no Bexley impact, it's really important that we understand that the advocacy that we continue to fight for, and we're really thankful for the vetoes from the governor's office, although it's not a direct impact on Bexley, it's a direct impact on public education and what's coming behind it. So the call to action that Carol has assisted us with, and many went to the State House and communicated with legislators, we must continue that. That is really important. There is an impact directly to us when these sorts of things happen. So a huge thank you to Kyle for educating us on the impact.
And can you go to the slide where Victoria's looking at the five-year, right there? So I appreciate your diligence and steadfastness in keeping five years. And think about maybe some, we are, we are very lucky to have you as a treasurer. And I feel as though if the state says go for a three-year forecast, that some districts may lean towards that, whereas you're of course going to continue to be diligent and exceed and keep us safe. And, and so I think by being who you are and being forward-thinking, that allows us to better go have a conversation with the community about what's down the pike. So if you only did three years, then that gives us less time to have a conversation about facts and figures and what's coming. So it really helps the, the overall organization.
What else do you have for us tonight?
I forgot to mention on that slide there, I put percentages underneath the days, so the dark purple bar, I just put percentages because that's kind of been out there in discussion. So I'll continue to use percentages too, because that's what the legislature is kind of using, so.
That's helpful. Thank you.
That's it.
Are there any items on the treasurer's section, B through G?
There was one item I wanted to bring up. Thank you for allowing me to jump in. Item 6F, wanted to give a little more context of, of what we're talking about with 6F. As a government employer, we have the ability to offer retirement options to our employees separate from their pensions. And those come in the form of 403Bs or 457s. So that's like a 401K for much of the world. So this is electives, elective deferrals from the employee standpoint. The district provides this to their benefit. So the compliance with these types of mechanisms is really, really important as an employer and as a treasurer. And we rely on experts for many things, and this is one of those things where I'm going to rely on an expert, even though I, I love this area and went to school for a lot of this type of stuff. We're going to rely on this, these partners. We have partners now and have had them since about 2009. We're going to shift to a, a different group, which really will not impact anything that we do from a day-to-day perspective, but that's the behind story of what this resolution is doing. So this is starting the process. You'll see more items next month about it. We'll kind of re-up everything, our, our plans, et cetera, but that's what that is.
Thank you for that. I know that was added to the agenda a little later, and so I'm, it's great to have that additional background and information. Any questions for Kyle about that? Kyle, we don't need to pull that out and do it by roll call. So I will move that we approve items 6B through 6G. Can I have a second?
Still moved. Second.
Thank you. All in favor of approving those items, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Thank you. That motion carries. The next item on our agenda is an executive session. A public board of education may hold an executive session upon a majority vote of the board by roll-call vote for consideration of any of certain enumerated matters. Our executive session today is to consider details relative to security arrangements and emergency response protocols for a public body or public office, and to consider the purchase of property for public purpose, the sale of property at competitive bidding, or the sale or other disposition of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit-for-use property if premature disclosure of an information would give an unfair advantage, or competitive advantage to a person whose personal or private interest is adverse to the general public interest. May I have a motion to enter into executive session for those purposes?
Still moved.
Thank you. And a second. Mike?
Second.
Kyle, would you call the roll for us?
Ms. Pickrell.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Powers.
Yes.
Tentative group?
I do not anticipate that the board will take any action following our executive